Good evening. Thank you for joining us for our regularly scheduled council meeting on Tuesday, May 9th at 7:00 PM. Madam Clerk, if you'll call the rule.
Charlie Davidson, George Glover, Ben Sossetta, Charles Swankie.
Here.
Tom Jones.
Here.
George Capps.
Here.
Brandy Bailey.
Here.
Jim Schrader.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. We'll begin with our invocation by Pastor Farrell and our Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Charles.
Heavenly Father, we're just gathered here tonight for this meeting, Lord, and, Lord, I just ask you to just bless this meeting and bless each and every one that's here. And be with the leaders tonight as they make decisions that affect people that live in this community and their surrounding areas and, Lord, just give them courage to make the right decisions and give them wisdom as they pursue what needs to be done tonight, Lord. Lord, I just pray for all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. Okay, first on the agenda is approval of the agenda, and I have a couple suggested changes with the motion would be due to three council members not being here tonight. I'd ask that we scratch item eight. And we also add an item 11 to be an executive session. And I would entertain a motion. Brandy.
I make a motion to scratch item eight and add number item 11 as an executive session.
Thank you, Brandy. Jim?
I'd second that.
What's the executive session?
The CC, we're discussing on CCU. Okay, have a motion and motion by Brandy, seconded by Jim to make said changes to the agenda as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes five zero. Okay, awards and presentations. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is always a great event when we're able to do something such as this. Sergeant Goodall. Sergeant Goodall was hired in 2003 by the Park City Police Department. In November, he will have served the city for 20 years. Thank you for your service. During his tenure with the city, he has been promoted to police officer two, senior patrol officer, and in 2014, he was promoted to the rank of sergeant. It is my sincere privilege this evening to announce that Sergeant Keith Goodall is being promoted to the rank of senior sergeant.
Yeah.
I don't want to make him look too tall, but yeah. Can we stop holding hands?
You like that?
So we have two proclamations this evening to honor two of the divisions of our city. The first one, this is very fitting after what we have just witnessed. The first one is a proclamation on National Police Week and Peace Officers Memorial Day. Whereas, law enforcement officers play an essential role in ensuring our safety, safeguarding our rights and freedoms, and partnering with citizens to keep our communities safe as possible. And whereas, when an unsafe situation does arrive, officers are the first to respond and provide assistance, often at risk great risk to their own personal safety. And whereas, 299 law enforcement officers in the state of Kansas have lost their lives in the line of duty. And whereas, Park City Police Officers continue to face increased danger and scrutiny in the performance of their official duties. And whereas, our police officers recognize their duty to serve our citizens by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas, the Congress and the President of the United States have established May 15th, 2023, as Police Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as National Police Week. Now therefore, the city of Park City proclaims May 15th, 2023, as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week of May 14th through May 20th as National Police Week in the city of Park City, and urges all citizens to mark this occasion by expressing their appreciation for the service Park City Police Officers provide and by commemorating police officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion have collectively preserved our rights and our security.
Well done.
Okay. Let me breathe a minute. The next one is for our Public Works Department. This is National Public Works Week, which is May 21st through 27th of 2023. The theme this year is connecting the world through public works. Whereas, public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Park City. And whereas, these infrastructures, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are federally mandated first responders, the engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and of private sector who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings and other structures and facilities that are essential for our citizens. And whereas, it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and the children in Park City to gain knowledge and maintain ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works, first responders, and public works programs. And whereas, the year 2023 marks the 63rd Annual National Public Works Week, which is sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now therefore, the mayor and council do hereby proclaim the week of May 21st through the 27th, 2023, as National Public Works Week and urges all citizens to recognize the substantial contributions that our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees make to protecting our national health, safety, and our quality of life.
Take your down.
Thank you.
Okay. Move on to. Okay, for public forum, I have Mr. Morris Perkins signed up.
Is that me?
Yes, sir.
And we're speaking on?
Public forum.
Item number four?
No, it was public forum.
I'm sorry, I gotta get closer. I can't hardly hear you. I did sign up to go on three agenda items, but the city manager administrator graciously informed me about the trailer item, so. But my question is, where are we at on the Hartman Arena situation? And why are we authorizing funds up there out of the transit gift tax? If we don't know, is it going to be there? Are these funds already committed?
Well, we're not part of the real estate transaction necessarily.
Speak up.
We are not part, we're not an owner of the arena. Our, our, uh, our part of it is we want to keep it as an arena, so it remains.
I understand that. I understand the whole thing about the deal. My question is, why are we allocating transit gift tax funds to it? Is it even going to be there? Are these events that have been scheduled, are they going to happen?
If the arena's not there, we won't, we won't give them any.
But we're voting tonight to commit these funds.
Right, but we don't pay the funds until after the event. We do not pay the funds until after the event.
Okay, so my concerns are really unfounded.
I wouldn't say that.
I guess you would say that. Okay, are we in agreement? My concerns are unfounded. All right. Now, what about the third one I signed up? They gotta wait to talk about that?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Huh?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So you'll call me up later?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, staff reports. Madison? Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you for having me. It's been a little bit, so I just wanted to provide you with a few updates on the Senior Center. First, some great news. We applied for a 5310 funding for a new Senior Center van about two years ago. And I just got notice yesterday that Wichita Transit has the van. So it's just a matter of getting some of the small details figured out, including payment and insurance and tags, and then it'll be in our possession and I can start planning some trips with it. So that's exciting news. Next, just a few numbers to update you with. The Senior Center has seen over 300 active members so far this year in 2023. Our average daily attendance is around 35 throughout Monday through Sunday, so that includes the weekends. And then we, our Meals on Wheels numbers have increased recently, so we deliver about 75 to 80 meals every day from the Park City Senior Center to Bel Air, Kechai, Park City, and Valley Center. So we are on track. We're meeting and planning to exceed our program and attendance requirements set by Sedgwick County Department on Aging. So just some updates on some events and programs that we've had so far this year. We started a chair yoga class every Friday. That's been pretty popular so far. And also, we've started a new transportation program because public transportation up north of Wichita is, is limited. So I wanted to try something new and we are using Lyft, the rideshare program Lyft. They have what's called Lyft Concierge, where I am able to schedule rides for participants, for seniors, and they don't have to have a smartphone to utilize the service. So I can schedule rides to doctor's appointments, to the Senior Center, back home, and it's, it's worked out really, really well so far. Both the Chair Yoga and Lyft Concierge programs are programs that are being funded by additional Sedgwick County Mill Levy Funds this year that I applied for, and I do, I have applied for those funds for next year as well, so I hope to continue those programs into next year. We were able to provide AARP Tax Aid this year, and they saw and prepared taxes for around 75 participants this year. And recently, I did hold a volunteer appreciation dinner where we hosted around 45 of our volunteers for a catered dinner and a magic show, which was a lot of fun. I know they really appreciated it, and since I am the only employee there, I, I couldn't do it without my volunteers, so April was National Volunteer Month, and I wanted to do something special for them. Upcoming events and programs, we do have a Mother's Day Afternoon Team this Thursday. And we have about 40 participants signed up for that. We do have another Beginner's Pickleball Clinic next, beginning next week. That's instructed by Dan Letty, and we are currently full and taking names for a waitlist for that class. And then Chisholm Trail Seniors have their annual Fourth of July Bingo and Raffle fundraiser that they will be hosting again at the Senior Center on July 4th. They are selling, currently selling raffle tickets, so if you know of a Senior Center member, or you can talk to me and to purchase raffle tickets, it, it goes to a good cause. And that is really all the updates I have for you now, but just want to say thank you for your continued support, and I look forward to hopefully growing and modernizing in the future, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. George?
Do you have karaoke? Do you have any good crooners over there?
Do we have karaoke?
No, you haven't. Do you have any good crooners?
Crooners? I'm, I'm sure that we do, yes.
Okay.
I think he's volunteering.
Yeah, no, I was gonna say, when are we doing this? Because I'll get it on the schedule right away.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have the consent agenda, and Mr. Perkins. I guess he already discussed that on the transient taxes, what was his comments about? So do I have a motion on the consent agenda? Jim?
I would move to approve the consent agenda.
And Brandy?
Second.
Okay, seeing no further comment, a motion by Jim, seconded by Brandy, to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item five. Discuss and consider approval of a proposed change of zoning district classification from the light, from the I-1 Light Industrial District to the E-1 Entertainment District located approximately one quarter mile north of 77th Street North between North Broadway Avenue and I-135. Russ?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Russ Avi, zoning administrator. This was the one of two zoning cases that we heard last month. It's Planning Commission meeting. This sits right directly south of Hartman Arena on the south side of Briar Rose. It encompasses approximately 18 acres in size, plus a seven acre more or less reserve for the total rezoning application area. Planning Commission approved or recommended approval four to zero of the request to change the zoning to match the, the arena zoning to the north. This property has been somewhat vacant since its inception. So again, looking at the zoning factors we utilized in the staff report and the Planning Commission used for the recommendation, that was one of the factors. We want to see this area thrive. We want to see this particular development area grow, and this was a project that met all of our criteria, and I'll stand for any questions that the, that the council may have.
Brandy?
I just have one question. The, um, tonight when we had our special meeting, they showed their, their layout of the area and where the, where their proposed building will be, but then they showed that they owned the frontage lots. This zoning, does it include the, it doesn't include the frontage lots?
It does not include the frontage lots.
Okay. Then with that, I'll make a motion to to approve the zone change as presented.
Jim?
I don't have any questions either, so I would second that.
Tom?
I was gonna make a motion.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the zoning change. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes five zero. Item six is discuss and consider approval. Roll call vote? Okay, Madam Clerk?
Charlie Davidson, George Glover, Ben Sossetta, Charles Swankie.
Yes.
Tom Jones.
Aye.
Yes.
George Capps.
Yes.
Brandy Bailey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Onto item six, discuss and consider approval of a proposed change of zoning district classification from the RR Rural Residential District, Sedgwick County, to the R-2 Single Family Residential District located approximately one half mile south of 93rd Street North and east of North Broadway Avenue. Address being 9056 North Broadway Avenue. Russ?
Thank you. This area sets approximately 600 feet north of the northwest corner of Saddle Brook Edition, between the application area that you see on your screen and the hedgerow along the north line of Saddle Brook. All the way to the east edge of Saddle Brook will be a residential development. This piece of property is, this request is a little bit unique in that this particular application area was part roughly the south half of a residential tract that was recently annexed into the city of Park City. As we know, upon annexation, we have to actively rezone the property, so to make this the same zoning district, R-2, as the rest of the proposed Briar Brook Edition, we are rezoning this, or the applicant is rezoning the south half of this. Again, we did have speaker from the neighborhood who spoke not in opposition to this particular request, but to the subdivision as a whole. Other than that, we've received no other input. Staff is recommending approval to the Planning Commission based on the factors in the staff report that are provided to you. Planning Commission ultimately accepted those factors and recommended four to zero for approval. And I'll stand for any questions that you.
Thank you, Russ. Do I have any comments or a motion? Brandy?
Make a motion to approve the zone change as presented.
And Charles?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, and this will be a roll call vote also. Seeing no further comment, Madam Clerk, if you'll call the rule.
Charles Swankie.
Yes.
Tom Jones.
Yes.
George Capps.
Aye.
Brandy Bailey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
Passes five zero. Is Pat Lyon here? I have down that you were wanting to talk on item number one. Sorry, but that was on, you want 10? Okay. Thank you. I just didn't want to miss you. Okay. Okay, we'll move on to item seven, discuss and consider the purchase of three trailers.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You have before you a request to purchase three trailers for Public Works, two dump trailers and one implement trailer, $21,600 to be paid from Streets Fund, and $7,700 to be paid from the Park Fund, all budgeted items.
Tom?
I just have one question. Where are they going to be stored?
At the Public Works facility, the Sherwood facility.
Okay.
You tell what they'd be used for?
So the dump trailers, we can use for brush, hauling larger things, materials. The implement trailer would mainly be to transport our skid loader, also mowing equipment.
Okay. Is this replacing old trailers or just an addition?
Yeah, we do have three smaller fabricated trailers that we'd be looking to dispose of on Purple Wave.
Thank you. Very good. Tom, did you have another comment?
No. I'll go ahead and make a motion if there aren't any more comments.
No more?
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase order of three trailers from MCT Trailers in the amount of $29,300 to be paid from, from Streets and Park Funds.
Okay, Charles?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. I do have someone signed up to speak on this. Mr. Perkins, if you want to come forward, you could speak on this item.
Oh, I just got so much I wanted to tell you all. Listening to this earlier, Your Honor, I remember when you first moved to Park City.
Yes.
This lived down the street from me, worked for the Highway Patrol, and I just want to say in the words of Will Gere to Robert Redford and Jeremiah Johnson, "You've come a long way, pilgrim." One of those great movie quotes. I'm sorry, when you called me up earlier, I didn't realize it was the forum thing. And now we're on the, we're on the subject of the media.
No, we're, we're on the subject of the trailers. No, we're, we're on the subject of the trailers.
Oh, the trailers, I said, we were, he explained that all to me.
So, you don't want to talk on that?
Aye.
I'm sorry to waste your trip up here. You're welcome to sit on the front row.
You know, I might just have to sit close, because I might be up here again.
Keep an eye on that guy.
I got more to say.
Put an eye on that guy right there.
George Glover's always telling me, "Come to the council meetings." Instead of being in his ear, darn if he ain't here. You know, you almost didn't have a quorum tonight, did you?
Nah, we're good.
All right. I'll, I'll be back up there in a sec.
Thank you. You're welcome to sit on the front row. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Charles, you're done discussing, or did you have something else?
No.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes five zero. Okay, we're skipping item eight. We will move to item nine. Receive a budget for proposed media services related to the August 1st sales tax referendum election.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Attached, as I had sent earlier in an email, I just wanted to make certain to clarify. Attached is a budget of proposed media services and options that council may want to consider for the sales tax, property tax referendum election on August 1st. All the options listed are not or may not be required, and adequate time throughout the process will be available to choose which options that council would like to employ. As of right now, the only two time-sensitive items are those in the packet that says they are highlighted in red due to the timeliness or long lead time. I got a phone call from one of the council members that said, "That's great," except for the fact that there's nothing highlighted in red, so it didn't come through. The, the two items that are timely right now is the first one, public information logo, so that they can get going in marketing. And then the actual, the next one would be farther down where it's public information website, the week of May 22nd. Just because it's a longer lead time to get a website going, to put out information for the citizens to take into consideration. Again, as I indicated, all these are just options that may be available. As the consultant, he will be back in town this next week to, to sit there and meet with council, individual council members if they would like, if there is questions as far as those. He puts out a proposed budget because each community is unique. It's a complete listing of all the services that are made available, but Park City may not be interested in one, two, or three of these particular items. But again, he didn't want to make that decision for the council, so.
Thank you.
So, as of right now, this is, if council would agree with the first two items, that's, I, I think that that would be appropriate to make a motion for that. But the other ones are just for council's information to receive and file going forward just so that you know what the, could be coming down the way.
Sorry, I'm scrolling through here. Does anybody have any comments you'd like to share? Brandy?
I know this is just for receive and file, but I just want to say that for that public information video shoot, I know when we first bought that land, we did a, a shoot where the council, you know, talked about it a little bit. I think this would be good now to kind of give where we're at now in the process with the council speaking is, again, so I just want to throw that out there, that I think an information video shoot would be good to do.
Yes, ma'am, and specifically, that's, I think that's the third question that's been raised about that, the utility behind that type of presentation being put on. And the one thing that was explained by the consultant was the fact that you have consistency in the message being told. That is a message that could be played at the Chamber of Commerce meeting, it could go to HOA meetings, to where not the council or whoever's speaking may not be available at all times, but at least you're making certain that there's a consistent message that's being conveyed to the citizens. And that would be the number one advantage of doing something along that line, so noted, ma'am.
I would agree with that. And I, you know, it may be a good idea to allow maybe some citizens to even weigh in on that, on, you know, what, what they'd like to see with, with the project. Tom?
Why, why can't we use one of the logos we've already got? Or is there some reason? I mean, we're looking at 850 bucks for a logo that.
It's, it's not so much a logo for the community itself. It's a logo that people identify with this particular election on August 1st for the, you know, either property tax reduction referendum or sales tax question referendum. Still, council will need to determine how that actual question is posed and presented to the citizens. But that's the logo that he is talking about, something so that when somebody looks at it, they recognize, oh, this information is related specifically, not so much to Park City, but to the actual referendum question being posed on August 1st.
Okay, well, I get a different thing in my head when I think logo.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We're not, we're not trying to recreate a Park City logo or whatever, those are.
Yeah, but.
Yes, sir.
It just, the message isn't there with the title, so.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Anybody else have any comments on this?
I do have one other question. For tonight, to get this thing started, do we need to go the full amount, or could we do a $7,000 number?
Well, that's what I'm saying, sir. The, the two things that he has recommended, just because of the timeliness and the long lead time, would be the $850 logo, as well as the public information website. So, if you combine the two of those, that's 7350.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And, and two, remember that you can fund it, and it doesn't mean we have to spend it.
I understand that. That's why I'm asking if we have to do the full amount.
I mean, I, I think the main thing we want to understand is, as we've, as we've said in, in recent meetings, and some of the folks that are here tonight probably have, have not heard, but some of the numbers that we're seeing is a 1% sales tax will generate, 88% of the money generated from it will come from other people from other areas and not Park City residents. So, 12% would be paid by Park City residents is what the anticipated numbers are. So, this all, obviously, could also give us the opportunity to provide some tax relief or prevent tax increases. As we know, our city's experienced a lot of growth lately, and we have a, a staffing study that's getting ready to come back for the police department, which I understand there's going to be some recommendations to enhance the numbers of the police officers. That all comes at a cost. So, this is something where we wouldn't have to pass a, that tax burden on to folks's ad valorem taxes that they pay every year on their property. It allows outside dollars to fund it. One of the, Ben's not here tonight, but he did send me some comments he'd asked to pass on, was about, and Sean, I think you may have talked to him as well, but the newspaper, newspaper ads seem to be very high for what our market is. I'm assuming we would be Ark Valley News, probably one or two.
Exactly. Like I said, at the time, this was a proposed budget for, let's just say, A city. So, when you sit there and look at that, whether you're in Park City and it's the Ark Valley News, or you're, you're in Wichita and you're planning on the Eagle, there's a difference in cost. And so, again, he just wanted to paint the, the picture of, here's what is possible to the council, things for the council to consider. You may want to do this, you may want to do direct mailers, you may want to do a website, you may want to do a logo, you may want to do advertise. That's still to be determined as far as what the council wants done, but it's, it's thrown in conservatively. Yes, I do not expect that the Ark Valley News would have that, that kind of rate for ads.
And, and of course, billboards. As you mentioned, that this is obviously for, for their approximate value of, in other areas, but we, we really don't have a billboard I think would be beneficial for us to do. I think we, we're a small town, a special community that.
Yes, sir.
Special needs, and I, I feel like that we could taper this thing down quite a bit, so.
Yes, sir.
So, do I have a motion? Brandy?
I'll make a motion to approve the public information logo for the week.
Brandy, I'm sorry. I apologize for interrupting you. Mr. Peterson did want to speak on this item. Perkins?
Well, again, Mr. Fox graciously gave me some facts and figures on property tax, how much we get back from the county and everything else. We just got a break on the food sales tax from the state. And now you want to add a 1% sales tax. I, I, I don't see the wisdom in that. You know, the, and like I pointed out, Mr. Fox, the value on my house goes up every year. I pay more property tax. I mean, when is it enough, fellas? And I understand, okay, 45% of the people that pay sales tax come from outside of 40 miles of this area. But we got to think about the people that leave, live in this area. You know, a lot of us are on fixed incomes. And you think, oh, a penny here and a penny there and a penny. It all adds up. It all, that's really what I'd have wanted to speak up at the forum, but as far as this, this is a political issue. And I think in fairness to the taxpayers, if you're going to politicize this, you have to give both sides of the issue what's, what it's good for and why it's not good, because you're spending taxpayer money to do it. And really, I don't know the best way to inform the public. He mentioned the Wichita Eagle. How many people here get the Eagle? I dumped it a long time ago. It ain't even a decent fish wrap. The Park City Valley News, that's pretty good. But if you don't have a computer, huh? I ain't going to go down to the library just to read up on the, I'm telling you, folks. And if you do a mailer, you know what's so bad is the apathy of the people in this town. You can't get 8% to 10% of them to vote for you guys to go into office. Come on. Now, it's all in your court, whether this happens or not. And I know how these referendums and these things can get worded, so you can make it go one way or the other. Remember the slot machines in the casino? If they hadn't said Sedgwick County, that thing would have passed, and we'd still have an active dog track up here. But when people walked in and saw 2,500 slot machines for Sedgwick County, they said, "I'm not voting on that." And I can remember some other issues in the city here where we had polls, the water treatment issue years ago. You sent out a questionnaire. Well, do you want treatment? Do you already treat, or do you not want to treat? Well, you know what the responses were? 33% in each question. And you know how we interpreted it? Well, 33 won it, and 33 already do it, so it passes, we're going to do it. And I'm glad we did, because my water heater lasts longer, the plumbing lasts longer. But see how these things can be worded and manipulated? So, if you're going to spend the money, let's present both sides of the issue. Please.
Thank you.
I think I'm done here for tonight. Thank you all for serving. I appreciate you, and thank you for giving me this chance to speak.
Thanks for coming in.
Mr. Fox, you've been very gracious.
Yes, sir. Thank you. All right. Brandy, I'm sorry I interrupted you there. If you would pick back up where you left off.
I make a motion to receive and file the budget proposed for media services related to the August 1st sales tax referendum election. But I also, in my motion, move to approve public information logo for the week of May 8th for $850, public information website for the week of May 22nd for $6,500, and public information video shoot the week of May 22nd produced week of May 29th for a budget of $8,000 to $9,000.
I'll, I'll second that. And I guess just for discussion, that was because the extra items were because of the timing versus our meetings.
Needing to get them approved now.
Yeah, I added the public information video shoot because it says week of May 22nd, we don't meet again until the 23rd. So, that way it could get produced and shot in the, in his timeframe.
Thank you for catching up, Brandy. Tom?
I'd like to make a comment on the last speaker that was up, that was talking about offsets and stuff like that, and let him know that that has been discussed up here of potentially mill levies and stuff like that. So, it's not a dead issue, and it's not, it's not been quiet. We are talking about, there should be a homeowner offset of some sort, depending on what the tax base is going to be generated and stuff, and then what we end up doing. So, there's several council members that are talking about that.
I, I guess in saying that, and I do agree that there should be, but I also want to be very careful, because I, for one, had a significant increase on my appraisal and appealed it. And during my appeal conversation with the county, he said, "This estimate is based on last year, it's not based on this year, it just comes out this year." So, last year, he said, it was, last year was much higher and the market was really popping. So, that tells me that he's saying that it's not now. So, we need to also anticipate that some values are going to go down.
Mine, mine didn't. It went up again.
Mine did too, 21%. So, all right, so we have a motion by Brandy, seconded by Jim. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes five zero. Move to item 10, discuss and consider draft Park City Park Center master site plan. Sean?
Yes, sir. And finally, for tonight, we have representatives both from PEC as well as Lang and Associates. They're here to just present, as well as receive feedback and guidance on the latest draft proposal for the site plan for our downtown district. We have Nick, if he can come up, and Ryan, both of you. We should have a copy of it on the large screen, I believe, Matt. And then also for council, I printed off a, a larger copy for you to make notes on or, so, this has already been through, as council may know, originally, we started off with Confluence, and they came up with what we titled the overall downtown master plan. But if anything, it was more a vision that just said the key concepts that council had indicated, or the citizens as well, indicated they wanted in their downtown district. From that time period, we have partnered with Lang as well as PEC to go through and take a look at it and figure out something that is a little bit more realistic, that can actually be built, taking into cost considerations and everything along that line. This plan here has probably been through two or three different renditions, back and forth. We finally think that it's probably somewhere in the neighborhood of an 85, 90% solution. But again, that's up to this council to determine what they like and don't like about it. And so, I'll let these two stand up and, and make a presentation on it and go from there, sir.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, for having us here tonight. We appreciate it. I'll touch on a few things and then let Nick speak, kind of on the, more of the green elements of it, and, and some of the connectivity to trails and all of the systems that we kind of plan to program in here. So, as we, as we, when we worked through the original workshop, we, we identified really four housing product types that you'll see represented in this plan, from apartments. There's, there's two different planned apartment projects on this. In total, each one of those towers, if you will, would be, or groupings would be about 150 to 200 proposed apartments envisioned at not to exceed three stories tall, probably, likely could be less than that, depending on how the layout is, et cetera. We have found very good response from the market and also from our internal team to be able to bring what we believe are going to be two different apartment projects, or one large apartment project on and scale in at the appropriate times. We also on this identify what we've identified here as townhomes, like for us to think of these differently than the traditional duplex, but I think that this is a rental product. But I also think that, by and large, I think it's a rental product, but I, I do think that there will be sellable units in this as well. We've created some buffering areas between the existing residential and, and our, our site, trying to, you know, create a buffering area, I guess. And then the other is the, there's a senior, there's senior living considered on this as well. We don't necessarily imagine that today to be, you know, like a full-service senior living facility, but more of an active living 55-plus type community segment that has kind of a age-in-place, if you will, approach on the housing. So, those are the three predominant housing products that, that are shown here. All of those three products, we have, and Hunter could speak on this better than I, we have received, again, very strong support. We anticipate, we've, we've requested, because of the support and the, the amount of interest, that we receive proposals from the different, you know, potential partners that would be involved in this by the 12th of this month, so this Friday. So, we'll be reviewing them internally and then obviously sharing those as we kind of arrive at some findings. So, in total, I think this, this hits the residential housing needs that we've kind of identified in the, in the workshop and in the plan. In total, there's probably 350 to 400 apartment doors that are planned or potential here. There's roughly 80 townhomes that, and that could grow. Obviously, you see the area that we've identified as future development area. We felt like it was. We felt like it was important at this stage to not convey programming into certain portions of the development that we don't really know where the market's going to take us yet. So I could see the townhome concept growing. We've had some other commercial applications and use, uses that have shown some interest in maybe locating there and all of those will continue to, to work through. And then kind of lastly, the, the other elements that you see here are more of the commercial and we've got two kind of bookended or, or, you know, blanketed on that main arterial road coming in. And so imagine that, this, this site plan is doing it justice. When we get the renderings, et cetera, I think you'll really be able to imagine this grand entrance as you come in off of 61st and a very inviting look into the park center. So the focus being the park center. It's approximately about three acres. The programming for that park is to be determined. That I think will come in, you know, in following discussion with PEC and, and other stakeholders in, in and around that, that we'll figure out what is the right programming to bring to the, to the, and what scale on the, on the park center. The rest of it is just different retail and commercial applications from, you know, restaurants, like all the things that we've envisioned and discussed and talked about, you know? And again, and I, I'll say this again, I, you know, I think it's important for us to continue to remember that probably on the commercial side of it, it's going to go a little slower than the residential. I think you're going to see very good results in the coming months on what the options that are available to us around the residential pieces. I don't feel like those are necessarily as established today in the commercial. And I think we've indicated that and continue to primarily based on the creation of density and demand in the area will help drive ultimately a lot of that activity. So again, still on the same general thought, you know, eclectic restaurants to shops to, you know, different eateries, coffee shops, bank, pharmacy, all of those things are in discussion. All of those things are being discussed. Hunter's been doing a tremendous job of, of kind of wrangling all of these leads and will continue to do so. The other thing that changed in this plan lastly was the kind of commercial segment up along 61st. So we elected to, to bring that road down. We kind of debated that here with staff and, and I feel like I like where this landed. And it doesn't give us big pad sites along 61st, which probably isn't going to hit the market, right? So I don't, I don't think that, you know, Walmart or one of those equivalent are going to look at a big pad site to locate in the town park center. And if they do, we'll make adjustment if that is something that we decide that we have available to us and that we would want to take forward, we can make adjustments in the plat. But really that serves as more, I mean, I, you know, car washes to banks to pharmacies to, you know, different amenity services that need front door parking easily accessible off of 61st and you do not have to drive into the main kind of heart of the development, if you will, and deal with different kinds of parking situations that will be part of the park center. So I'll let Nick kind of speak to, Hunter, is there anything you want to hit on as far as tenant and different prospects right now or that we need to focus on or?
No, thank you. No, thank you, Councilman. Just want to talk more on the retail side. I think we have gotten good feedback from, you know, I am imagining like a deli or coffee, different coffee shops. I know Ryan touched on that. Some more, what also didn't get addressed was possible office space within here. So really Park Center is going to be more of our true local retail and office projects compared to other things off 135. They're going to be more of kind of the national chains. Trying to still talk to some pharmacies as well. That's why we wanted to leave those 61st lots available for, you know, if bigger national tenants did envision themselves within Park Center, that they could have a spot along 61st where that major throwaway is probably going to end up being. So I think this updated master plan encompasses all of those things and gives us a good project while that residential piece is really going to be a Kickstarter for the commercial side. So that's really all I need to add.
Nick Stave, landscape architect with PEC. Been enjoyed working with your team on this project here. I'll just talk real briefly about kind of the design that we've been looking at with this. We wanted to create a walkable community, so that was kind of the number one goal that we were looking at. And then also create this town center. So everything's kind of working off of this grid system, kind of a more of a traditional town center. We can really program that nice, have a lot of nice park space down there, kind of like, you know, what Ryan was talking about, have this really nice grand entrance through there, through the commercial space. But one of the other considerations we were looking at too is, you know, making sure that we're screening, being good neighbors to the existing homes that are there. We, we don't want to put adjacent, adjacent use up against their backyard. That wouldn't be really, you know, you don't want apartments looking down in their, in their backyard. So we've, we've adjusted that and put some, you know, senior living, so that will be, you know, smaller houses type uses up against some backyards, the townhome type of use too. So less dense uses in those areas. One thing to note too is you can kind of see we have the really dense use in the center and then we spread out with the uses. So, you know, the apartments, the commercials is centered around in the center and then it kind of spreads out to the townhomes, the senior living and then the park space as you go out. One thing, so with this park, it, it's, it can be dedicated as park space. It can be used as future development if things keep really taking off, but it, it all ties together. And I know it's kind of hard to see on this plan right now, but it's intended that we would have a lot of walkable spaces, lock up, you know, it's pedestrian friendly, so you don't have to walk down the street. We have some corridors that are tree lined, you know, with sidewalks to get over to these park spaces. So if you're living in the apartment space, you can really utilize the entire development area and just walk to where you need to go, not have to drive your car.
I got to tell you, that's one of the things about this plan since the last one. I think to me, the walkable spaces is very big to me and not just that, that this area has walkable, but it connects to the existing walkable spaces we have in town so that we can connect neighborhoods or connect the community together.
That seems to be something that people are really wanting. When they look for communities, it's that quality of life and that connection to those walkable communities. So if we can connect this into your trail systems, I think that's a huge win.
I, I think if there's anything we learned after COVID is people have gotten accustomed to exercise outdoors and walking and to me, having them in the streets just as a safety issue. And I just, I think this is great, so.
Jim.
I, I kind of like the looks of this. Just so this, help me understand the scale. You know, longer ago, we were talking about having too big of a park area.
Sure.
So I, you know, my eyes are going to, well, the center of the red, which is labeled town center. What that, that's roughly half a block in size?
I think it was three acres.
Three acres in size.
Yeah. And then we'd have a big, you know, I don't know, courtyard down the, between the, the entrances there. So then, okay. So then over on 61st, the commercial lots, I, you know, I'm just trying to think down the road. Fast food, bank, what, something that has a drive through is, I mean, are we sized appropriately to make them marketable to that, that type of business?
Yeah, so for estimates right now, so for drive-throughs, I'm to say, we could fit a two lane drive-through quick service restaurant on about a 20,000 square foot pad site. So these would reflect possibly even two of them or two, what we call QSRs on a pad like this. So we would have some optionalities and just, I think Ryan earlier spoke to, just because this is how we are originally plotting it, you know, that could possibly change if a user only wanted half of that or if they wanted both of those. So I think we would just have options within that, but definitely would be able to, to fit a fast food restaurant or a bank or, you know, maybe that's a shared parking feature between, you know, some of those lots on the northeast side of this development. So where it can all kind of encompass and flow together naturally, which is what I think we would envision for this on the commercial space.
Brandy.
I, I would also point out on the backside of where the library sits, on the southeast side of it is a senior center expansion, just an option for that. I know we've talked about a few different plans of doing that, but it's my goal that at some point we make that happen.
Charles.
I've spent quite a bit of time over the last couple of days looking at this and trying to find something that I thought was wrong with it. And frankly, I can't. I think you have met all of the, all of the little details that we talked about, plus many of them. I'm, I'm particularly fond of the, the way that you, you've done the screening from the residential areas, the placement of the parking lots, you know, so that the, the walking is very limited, you know, and you can access everything from quite a bit of, without having to walk a lot further than, than the 61, 61st Street lots. That, I think that was a grand idea because I, I hope that those will develop, but it's having them there, I think it'll be appetizing to several different businesses that might want to come in. But I guess my question would be is like, how do you determine or do you have it determine the order of development? How do you start a project? What is the first thing you do?
So we, we are going to kind of follow our development agreement that you guys have approved and, and let me back up one step. Thank you first for those kind words, but also we want to be very cognizant of and appreciative of your guys' time and participation in arriving at this plan. So I think it's a, you know, a cohesive effort with all of us, the council and your staff and PEC and the design team overall to get where we got, right? So thank you guys for spending the time and giving that to us to, to help arrive at this. So we will follow the development agreement and how I understand the development agreement, I believe the next, the action out of this would be we adopt a master plan that serves as the general template for the development of the site there. In that, that will basically lay the footprint for PEC likely, when we, they will be working on proposals for this, to provide design and engineering for the infrastructure improvements for the site. So we anticipate soon with adoption of this plan, a proposal from PEC that we will be working with the council on determining how we want to allocate that cost. We anticipate it going on to special assessment financing, but can't go on special assessment financing until it's deeded over. So there'll be a process in that, but I think that we could get their, get PEC's proposal and issue a two-party agreement if needed between Lang City and PEC to serve as a temporary contract to get the design and infrastructure in place until it rolls into a special assessment financing and ultimately developer takes on the responsibility of, of the specials or the end users. So that, that is really the first project. That's going to take in my, you know, in all of our conversations, I mean, I think we are probably 120 days at best from probably having a design set. And from that 120 days, there would be a bid process, et cetera. So I mean, we're setting almost to June. How, what we originally had laid out was, you know, hope, plan to have this thing bid or, or want to have it bid by the end of the year for the infrastructure permit or part of it. The, the question in that is how do we phase it? How do we imagine the phasing of this, if any? So there's going to be different costs to go through in that. Like there's going to be efficiencies in doing it all in a single phase, but there's going to be costs that carry costs that may not be ideal. So depending on what our response is from the residential uses and how those all get split. But from PEC bidding it or however we end up going down that path, once it's bid, we anticipate a six-month construction time, correct? For the, for the infrastructure improvements. At that point though, I think that there will be development that could be happening alongside, vertical construction could be happening alongside some of the infrastructure improvements while they are being finished up. So, you know, we had tentatively talked to some of our prospects and, and had laid out that we felt like by the end of March that we would be at a, of 2024, that we would be at a place to go vertical. I think that's going to be close. I think it's going to be a little bit tight. It may push a month or two as we have worked through development agreements and site plans, et cetera. So how we get there to that first project is what we're doing now, what Hunter's doing now. So he's sourcing leads, he's having multiple conversations with capable partners to come alongside us. Lang will take on certain programming elements of this. Lang will not own and, and manage every single asset across this. It will be done in an architectural control committee that creates consistencies throughout. But we will begin to program the immediate needs and, and, and then from that, we would be developing construction plans for your guys' plan review and approval and make sure that it's adhering to the overall architectural plan. So with the other thing that we would need to do upon adoption of this is I think that we would be working with Sheldon Architecture and PEC and our, and Bill Gardner to design, to develop that architectural control set of requirements for the development overall. That would come subs, after approval of this. But I really had a long-winded explanation to, and I don't even know if I answered your questions or, but I, what, what we see is the residential, the apartment is going to come on. The apartment, I feel very strong that the apartment option is going, the 150 to 200 doors is going to be one of the very first projects. The townhome sites, I think those get parceled into individual platted lots. Some of those would probably just be sold out to other townhome developers that build that product consistently. And then the senior living component, we're going to have proposals on that as well this week. So I think we're going to have three different subsets of projects to talk about. And then I think where that rolls is in our development agreement, I think we've identified a commitment from the city to come alongside us on the park, that that is all being kind of planned and programmed at the same time and the delivery of that is, you know, time, time correct. And then, and then that, that would be a project in itself. And I know you guys are kind of contemplating maybe a senior center. There's some contemplation about the farmer's market and some of those type of things. So we will really start to identify the user, users that we can bring today and make sure they're qualified, make sure that they're going to be good partners, make sure that they are good fits for Park Center. On that, we would bring that to, to council and to staff. We would review those together and we would proceed accordingly. We want to keep you guys in that process, I feel like. I don't know that you are required to, so you may tell me, I don't want to be in that process and we just need to work through that with Sean. But I don't necessarily know that you have to be part of all of that process unless you would like to be. So we're open to any of that. So did I answer it?
I think you covered it well.
Okay. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom?
One of the things I was noticing on here, and it depends on how you look at it, but on the senior development areas, there's three of them. If we're going to do the senior expansion, I don't know if, I don't know if these are 55 plus or if they're scheduled like the apartments over here on the west side for older people that would live there and use the senior center.
Yeah.
Maybe we, if it's going to be just a patio home for 55 plus, it's one thing, but if it's somebody that we suspect to be 70, 80 years old living.
Sure.
Get them closer to the senior expansion.
And, and I think that needs to be evolved and, and those, I, I, I think that's a great point. And the conversation that Sean and I had, we've tentatively kind of proposed this or landed where we have, I think predominantly from the idea that the senior center would be inclusive of the entire community and maybe a little more accessible off of 61st and have, you know, front door parking, if you will. The more that we pull that into the town center portion, you're going to create some walking constraints from the, you know, parking lot to it. But I mean, obviously a, a shorter distance than if they're walking from one end of the development to the other to access a senior center. So I think I, I, I agree with you. We need to further analyze that and kind of determine what makes the most sense there. It's kind of challenging because the senior center, I think there's value on those 61st Street lots and not that the senior center doesn't add to that value, but I think the 61st Street frontage lots are going to, we'll, we'll see good success there and I think they're going to be valuable. So I would probably be against wanting to move senior living up to, you know, maybe right up on 61st. I, I think we want to keep it somewhat buffered. So I think the question's going to become, does the senior center need to be programmed close to the library and the city administration center? Or do we want to look at bringing that into a part of the development in some other form? And I've said that this is going to serve as a template. It is. There's going to be adaption, adaptation and change to this. I mean, what ends up getting built out here is not going to look identical to this.
I understand that. I was just trying to run up a point that.
No, not, yeah.
Point that.
Yes.
Depending on the facility that we're putting in up there, may need different kind of access to the senior.
Agreed.
Expansion.
Agreed. Yep. No, I think that's spot on.
Okay. Very good. We have a citizen signed up to speak too. Pat Lyon, if you'd like to come forward, please.
I'm the mayor and council.
Thank you for coming tonight.
I'm Pat Lyon and I live in the actually existing, I live in the existing residential neighborhood there. I am the last house next to the parking area there and live, actually the senior living center would be behind us. And there's been numerous changes, I know, to this plan over time. Confluence started out with an actual park, for one, and the park seems to be getting pushed further away and further away. And now we're seeing multiple-story apartment buildings, which was not in the original plan, nor was it presented to the public and at the initial phase of this design. There we had more of a multifamily housing, mind you, but not three-story apartment buildings. Now, I also, we've reviewed that and it does show now on this particular design, a much friendlier design, which if you can imagine owning or being the owner of the housing there, you do not want to open up your living room blinds and see a three-story apartment building. So they have redesigned that, which transitions the neighborhood more slowly into the park center. Now, we're not opposed to the park center and look forward to being able to walk in that neighborhood and, and enjoy the ice cream. But we do not want to have these bright lights or people peering with, oh, on the third story into my backyard. And you wouldn't either, I'm sure. Privacy would be invaded if we had these apartments behind us. So we also want to consider the lighting in the whole district. We would prefer to have a passive lighting, which that way we don't have LED lights, you know, shining directly into our homes. So that's one thing. Also, the buffer in the neighborhood, we'd like to see some sort of a buffer behind the residential areas there to help minimize the sound levels because there will be increased sound from the neighborhood and additional traffic. As it is designed here, I can see, you know, 800 people coming down Beaumont Street headed toward these townhomes and apartments. So there'll be numerous traffic. But a buffer from the residential neighborhood is greatly appreciated to transition more toward the park center. Also, in this change, we want to consider the property values because if you have these large apartment buildings behind your home, it will make it difficult to sell, that's for sure. There's a lot of acreage there to make changes and to make sure that these, you know, apartments are moved over to, more to the east side of the complex. I also want to mention that, you know, initially, you want people to be able to mingle. Well, a good way for, for neighbors to get to know neighbors or is having a splash pad. You know, I'm afraid we don't have a pool in Park City and I don't know that, there's not very many small communities that do not support a swimming pool or splash pad. And Park City, if you want to take your child to a pool, you have to leave the area. So, so I appreciate, this is a little smoother design. Also, I question all these commercial businesses because take a look around, how many empty buildings do we have in Park City? What can we do with them? Are you going to take the senior center, which by the way, I utilize on a regular basis? What are you going to do with the senior center when it's empty? If you want to move it, that's fine. Most of the night, I would say almost every person I know drives to the Park City senior center. So whether it's up on 61st Street or, you know, over here on the other side, that's not that relevant. You're still going to have to drive more than likely to get there. But the senior living behind here, now, I'd appreciate that behind my house, I might just live there. Then I could just enjoy it. So having the senior centers, the senior center and senior living is, is very important to Park City and I definitely think it's needed. If you wouldn't remember old man Schellenberger, that was his idea in the first place to build senior housing back there. I'm sure you, you remember that. So anyway, I, well, thank you for your time and I hope you consider the neighborhood along with the noise and the traffic and the values and bill. And if you're going to build apartments and townhomes, please make sure it's of quality. I do not, and not only that, but it will increase the crime in this particular area. We have already seen in our neighborhood motorbikes with small children sitting in the front, running up and down the street that is not open yet. So we've wanted to definitely consider, you know, a lot of these items and make sure it's quality and hopefully not too many rentals because as rental properties, the hell you're asking for is trouble. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Do we need a motion on, on this?
Motion to adopt.
No, sir, just, we wanted to make certain that we received the comments, the guidance, questions, concerns.
My, my personal feedback is, I, I think the closest we can put senior living to our future senior center expansion, the better. I feel like that facility gets used the most based on convenience and the closer they are, the more utilized it will be. And the senior housing would likely fill up faster with that type of amenity close to it. I do think they've done a great job at getting it close, but I, I like this plan much, much better.
I, I will say, I think part of it, we've talked about it, is the job of managing expectations because it's, right now it's a 2D drawing, two-dimensional drawing and it, and it looks kind of neat and it's like, okay, I can start to picture that and visualize that. But this is also a site plan. A site plan is nothing more than really blobology to sit there and say, in this big square, we're going to have apartments. I don't know if it's going to look like one big apartment building or if it's going to look like five or six apartment buildings. Those are just different renderings that Nick has come up with. So one of the things that we wanted to get is given the guidance and direction from council to come back a month from now, give Nick a whole entire month, but then also they're going to come back with some more 3D renderings of, kind of like the Confluence plan that can show exactly what they're envisioning that this would look like to go along with the 2D site plan. Because the 2D site plan, again, it's going to be just identifying this as a, as a retail square, this is a residential square, this may be a multifamily square, something along that line. So I just wanted to make certain we manage those expectations, sir.
Charles, did you have something else?
No.
Okay. Tom, you have something?
I've got me.
Okay. And George Katz?
Well, you know, I, I really identify with what the young lady just spoke. I, I, I listened very carefully to her and she makes some good points.
Yes, sir.
One of them is the lack of a swimming pool and everybody knows my opinion of that. I've, I've been upset about us taking the pool down that we had. But, you know, when I envision a downtown district, I don't envision apartment complexes and housing districts. I, I envision commercial business offices, things like that. To me, that's downtown, if you're envisioning in, in your mind, that's, that's just mine. But, you know, I, I, I hear what she's saying, you know? You don't want someone three stories up looking down in your backyard. I mean, come on. So I, I think that's something we really need to look at. And I, I, as long as I'm here, which won't be much longer, but I'll still scream about swimming pool. It, it's just ridiculous that our children have to go to Wichita Valley Center to swim. It's just ridiculous.
And I would echo your thoughts, but while we have some folks here tonight, I would back us up to the last item on the agenda and we're hoping we can fill that void.
Okay.
So, I mean, I think the important thing of this is, this, this plan has changed several times and probably will continue to change, but a lot of that's based off of council comment, but also public input. So thank you for coming tonight and we appreciate it. Your, your message is heard. Okay. I think we're done with item 10. Next, we have an executive session. Doug?
Mayor and council, I, I would recommend that council recess to an executive session for consultation with the city attorney on matters privileged under the attorney-client relationship concerning the KDHE consent order relating to the CCUAS wastewater treatment facility. The, those present should be the governing body, the city attorney, the administrator and the assistant administrator for a period of.
Fifteen?
Fifteen minutes.
Okay. I would entertain a motion for that. Brandy?
I move to, move to executive session for a matter of 15 minutes.
Thank you. Tom?
I'll second it.
With said members?
Yes.
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 You have motion by Brandy, seconded by Tom. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay. We'll be in executive session for 15 minutes. Okay, we are back from executive session. No binding action was taken. Move on to governing body reports. They'll be short tonight because we're fairly lopsided up here. Jim?
I don't have any reports tonight.
Okay. Brandy?
The only thing I have is, CCUA is having a special meeting Friday at 4:30 here at Park City Admin Center.
Thank you, Brandy. George?
Well, the only thing I would say is, in June is refiling day for those who wish to file for office or whatever. So June is the time, and that's coming quick. And I don't think, I don't want to be here very long, but I would, I would like to say, I wish some of you guys could have got to know, you hear these names all the time, like Sherwood and Conley. I had the, I had the great fortune of working with Pat Conley and Fred Sherwood. Pat Conley had done me a big favor one time, and he was a super gentleman. And they might be just names to some of you, but they were very important people to me. And that's all I got.
Thank you, George. Tom?
I don't have anything.
Charles?
I'd just like to mention that Sergeant Goodall, 20 years on the force, and his promotion, I think that's admirable, and congratulations to him. The Public Works Department, I know their week is coming up too, just right after the police week. And I think Public Works is one of those things that we underappreciate a lot. And they're probably one of the most valuable things we have in this town. And so I like the idea of having a Public Works Week also. That's it.
I feel like we should have a Public Works Week when there's a good snow or something like that.
Yeah.
Everybody really appreciates them. Okay, we are all done. I would entertain a non-debatable motion to adjourn. Jim?
I move we adjourn.
I'll second it.
All right, motion by Jim, seconded by Tom. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes 5-0. We are adjourned.